What's your main gagging up on me?
Welcome everybody to our Monday, January the 11th City Council Meeting. If we have a call or order, establish call please ma'am.
Terry McLung.
Here.
Joyce Seller.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Iggy Snyder.
Yo!
And a visitor disguised as James.
Here.
Quack quack.
If we can stand pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda please.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? If not, all those in favor of approving the motion to the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did anybody receive copies of the minutes and get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, deletions, corrections? If not, all those in favor signify their approval by saying aye.
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 All right. Our next order of business is we have, this being the first meeting of the new year, we have to appoint two new council members to the CAPC for this year. This ma'am, Ms. Snyder.
I would like to nominate Joyce Seller and Terry McLung so we can do a little bit of a changeover for CAPC and I'd like to, even though it's not further, also nominate James for pro temp.
We'll have to wait on that one.
I think the commissioners should be one at a time.
One at a time nominated and voted.
Okay, then I nominate Joyce for CAPC.
All right. Die is for lack of a second. Have any other nominations?
I nominate Terry McLung.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Want my campaign speech?
No. We've got shots outside.
Oh.
All right. Guess all those in favor sing by saying aye, but we only have one nomination, so it's really my acclamation on there. We still have another position to fill. Ms. Snyder?
Which you guys wanted.
I make a motion to James, for James, to veto.
Any other motions? If not, then James will get it by acclamation. All right, we'll go on to our other positions. We don't really have another vacancy in the parks position and also the cemetery position. We've got one position that's, actually we'll have two positions that'll be vacant in the cemetery. So anyone that's listening in the public, if you're interested in doing some service work, please come down. We've got positions for both the city parks and for the cemetery. So, please come in. And now, no public comments. No public. All right.
You have something to say?
No thanks.
No thanks.
Good work.
All right, we're going to jump right into new business, setting our meeting dates for 2016.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Mr. McLung.
I think the second and fourth Mondays has worked well enough, but I'd like to continue that, so I make that a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Now we need a nomination for pro temp. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, since we went the other way on that, then I would like to nominate David for pro temp.
Second.
Any other nominations? All right, nomination's closed and congratulations, David. You will now be the mayor pro temp by acclamation. Do we get a motion to discuss for rules and procedure for 2016?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Normally we do the Robert's Rules of Orders.
Not the abridged, just the whole, the whole thing? I don't remember. I hate to ask the attorney, but I'm going to have to, you can't charge us in meetings.
Well, I'll have to research that issue.
All right, I make a motion when we go to Robert's Rules of Order combo. Long end, abridged.
Be updated.
Whatever it is. We do what we want anyway.
Well, I guess, I don't know. You get a second or?
I'll second that.
Okay. You want to comment, Mickey?
I've asked before, I'm going to ask again. Why can't we get rid of Robert and just do our own thing? I don't like where that comes in.
Well, Robert covers it pretty good. I mean, we haven't had really too much trouble using Robert.
I don't like being called Ms. Snyder, I want to be called Mickey.
I've been calling you Mickey.
Yeah, you have, but according to Robert's.
Well, it's just, yeah, it's just a form of politeness more than.
And just in case there are problems, it does give a structure.
Yeah, it's got the best structure.
I like yelling at people.
But it does help when, like when we have legal issues and we all have to go sit at the judges over there and listen to things, at least we know we had some boundaries.
Yeah. This has been a well-ordered council, but I have been on councils that were just so divisive and so argumentative that Robert's Rules of Order was the only way we could go forward. So, it comes in handy once in a while.
It does. I agree. And I think, and actually in Terry's motion, I think really the abridged is part of the total package. So I think if we use the total package, then we would be accomplishing, would be utilizing the abridged as required or when necessary. That's just a shorter version is all that is.
Okay, the abridged, okay.
That's fine.
I didn't know if there was that big of a difference, everybody got excited.
It's just, it's a smaller handbook.
Oh, and then we need the abbreviated.
You know, so, but if it gets into complications, the big one helps.
Robert's Rules of Orders for Dummies would be perfect.
I have a copy of that also.
Oh, do you?
All right, well, let's go with a motion that approved for using Robert's Rules of Order.
Aye.
Did we get a second on that?
We did a second.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Think you guys have a copy of the ordinance for collections of district court fines in front of you maybe? Get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all right. Give you a little background, this is something that the auditors suggested that we do to be able to make sure that we have safeguards in collections of the monies. They always like to have two people or two different groups handling money. And so what happens is basically the fines come in and instead of being paid right there, the court clerk, they go up to the police station and they'll take the fines there. And then the police station will then issue a check. And so there's checks and bounds, and that's what this is about. Auditor suggested that this is normally what we do in other cities.
Police department issues a check to?
No, they pay, the police, the people who get the fines give the checks to the police, or pay their fines to the police department, and then the police department cuts the check back to the courts.
Oh, really? So they deposit it in some account and then get a check back instead of just giving what they got directly over?
That's because there's been cases of sometimes the court clerk not always accounting for all the money.
You know, I remember something about reading about Berryville and the thing that was going on with the county clerk and the sheriff's department and the fines, and they were way behind and the fines weren't being collected, and it was, it was a significant amount of money, a huge amount as I recall. So who's the check and balance here to know the percentage of the fines that are collected and what happens to the fines that are not collected?
The warrant gets, the court will notify, the clerk will keep track of the money because she, when the money comes back in, then she will note that money's there and then will note that against the person's fines.
So it's still, so the issue of fines that are not collected, that are delinquent or whatever, is the responsibility of the county clerk, not our police department, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
Well, I mean, this says, Eureka Springs Police Department as the official responsible for the collection of fines. So if they're not, if people aren't making them, then they've got to go after them. That's what it says.
Yeah, they'll go after them if they're not being made, but they'll be notified by the clerk that they're not being made.
Well, okay.
Because the police department won't know until they're notified that the money's due and payable.
Shouldn't they get a list or something?
I don't know if they do or not. They do get a list, yeah.
They get a warrant.
So they would know when, I'm confused. If they have a list of fines due?
Let Mr. Weaver explain.
If you fail to pay your fines or court costs, the clerk drafts a warrant and that's placed before the judge. The judge then signs the warrant. That warrant is then placed in the system countywide, but the police department are the ones that typically go pick up locals that are behind. If they're out of state, they may be arrested by even an out-of-state agency. They cannot be transported back across state lines if it's a misdemeanor warrant, but they can be held for three days in another state until they either cough up or don't pay for three days if they're captured inside Arkansas. It's a departmental choice of how far they want to transport them based on how much they owe.
Ms. McLung?
So I guess, you know, if there's 10 different people that go out to the police station and pay their fines and then, and then they write a check, but there's an accounting for what it all is, I assume, does the police department retain anything?
No.
No collection fee or anything like that? Okay, just checking.
Ms. Seller?
This would read better, it would be even more easily understood if it read an ordinance designated the Eureka Springs Police Department as the official body responsible for the collection of fines. You can read this to believe that the chief of police is responsible by just saying official, but if you say official body, it means anybody in the police department. Or are we going to designate someone in the police department as the person responsible for keeping track of this?
Oh, position.
They don't have an order or a treasurer or anything, do they?
No, they come in and they'll come in at all times of night, midnight, and pay their fines, which is what they do now. Mr. Weaver, what's your thoughts?
I think the official, just using the word official is fine because ultimately the one responsible, if something gets screwed up, is the chief. Although, I mean, he can designate that way who he believes in the department is collecting, can collect. So I'm sure he's not going to have the parking people out collecting them, wouldn't think. I mean, he'll designate most likely the dispatch people that'll do it, that's who's been doing it primarily at this point, I think.
Well, this is always.
Shelley does it during the daytime most of the time.
This is always by check, isn't it? It's never by cash, is it? Or do people pay fines in cash?
People pay fines in about every form except live chicken.
So you know when that's been.
We've only run into this once and it was for parking meters, so I just, I just wanted to be sure, it was clear.
No, they'll take, I mean, you know, postal, money orders, cash, you know.
Well, someone then has to audit the thing just so if we have an argumentative citizen who wants to check up on this, there should be some way they can do this. Somebody's got to use books.
There's going to be books from the police department notifying to the clerk what's going on and the clerk will also send to the police department. So, right now, there isn't any official way to do it, although the police department has been collecting the monies and sending it on. But there's not an official, anything, an official ordinance designating that. You going to say something?
No, it's fine.
Mr. McLung, do you have a question? Okay.
I'm all set.
All right. So can we get a motion to designate a number and read it?
So moved.
No, that's already happened. We need a motion to sign it a number and read it on its first reading.
That's what I just.
Is that what you did?
That's what he said and I'm saying what he said.
Yeah, I didn't get it written on the first reading, but yeah, all right.
Sorry, we're playing with our ladybug over here.
Somebody consult James to get this correct, please. Do we have a second?
Mr. McLung?
I did.
Oh, thank you.
So all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
The ordinance number will be 2235 and ordinance designating Eureka Springs Police Department as the official responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas Arkansas Code 1613709 provides that the city must designate the official primarily responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and whereas the city council finds it is appropriate to designate the police department of the city of Eureka Springs as the official responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs as follows. Section 1, the police department is hereby designated as primarily responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 2, all ordinance as previously enacted in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed.
Can a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those.
I assume the chiefs will talk to you about this and it's fine?
Okay.
All those in favor of approving ordinance 2235 on its first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Yes, sir.
I would like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2235 on a second reading by title only.
Second that.
Okay, any discussion? Real call.
Mr. McLung?
Yep.
Ms. Seller?
Here, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Page 0. Ordinance number 2235 and ordinance designating Eureka Springs Police Department as the official responsible for the collection of fines assessed in district court for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2235 on a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Merrill, there's not any hurry to do a third, is there?
No. Okay, we'll take this up in the next, next council meeting. All right, our next order of business is discussion of taxis. Ms. Seller, Mr. Mitchell.
Motion to discuss.
Get a second.
Second.
You want to lead off?
Well, I will because I'm the one that brought it up. I just feel that with the situation that we have with the taxis, now that the ownership is in somebody else's hands, that we are going to have a problem down the road. At this point in time, I want to call on the city clerk who, the other's done a lot of research on this, she's been researching it for a couple of years, ever since I came on the council years ago. And at this point, we have, we don't really have a franchise, but we do have one, and I want her to explain just what our situation is here, and then we can talk about what's possibly going to happen if we don't clean this up. And what I would like, the goal of this whole thing, is that we could perhaps agree to have the city attorney draw up either, draw up something revising or restoring the original franchise so that we have some control over who's driving taxis in the city. At this point in time, anybody can go down to city hall and get a license and stick a sign on their car and become a taxi, and that's going to be a train wreck waiting to happen eventually. So, Anne, if you.
Mr. McLung?
Okay.
A couple of things. Don't we have two taxi franchises?
No.
David is not, Eureka Taxi is no longer operating?
I'm really confused.
Does he not have a business license to operate or no?
There are two taxi, there are two entities licensed to operate taxis in town.
Okay.
Their franchise disappeared from the code book.
Okay, then that's fine. I'm not, that's, I'm happy with that because that was all done in front of the people here. Okay, the second part of it is.
There's more.
I'm talking, okay?
Yeah, but there's more.
I'm talking, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is, is directed at the city attorney in that if a, if a business, whether if it's a corporation or a limited partnership, I mean, properties, businesses change owners. So if there's a stock transfer or if there's something like that that goes from one name to the other, that doesn't, that doesn't negate the franchise, is that, or the business, is that not correct, sir?
That is correct. Would not necessarily in a franchise situation or otherwise.
Or just a, just a business license.
I mean, we have, we have franchises for our cable, we have franchises for other things, and the stockholders, which are the individuals that own those corporations, change on a minute-to-minute basis. So basically, if they remain in business as that corporation, that corporation holds the license.
Well, let's, let's take it out of, out of not being a franchise, since our taxis are not franchises, they're just businesses. And so if, if, if I have a business and it's a corporation and I sell it to Joe Blow and he doesn't change ownership or anything, nothing changes with that. Right, I mean, he still pays the same taxes or, and everything under that is doing business as so-and-so.
If, if he purchases the entire business.
Right.
If he purchases only the assets and not the liabilities, potentially that would be different. Some sales of businesses you do not purchase. All the grief that might go along with the original business, and in that case, you're actually just buying the rolling stock or something of that nature, but.
Well, yeah, that in itself is different if you didn't buy the rolling stock, but if you're lock, stock and barrel.
But if you're buying the whole business, you're simply changing the name on the underlying papers and you would buy everything.
Okay. Okay. So what's, what, I don't understand what our problem is.
Anne, why don't you explain it? Well, I needed clarification on whether one entity that came to council and was approved to have a business under one name could have people, other people operating if that was legal and there was no, there's really nothing in code to assure that, for instance, if there were a franchise, it would be a 24/7 operation and people could get transportation anytime they needed it because that would be part of the agreement. But when it fell out of the book, we came upon a situation where the companies now can just operate when they want to. Some people will probably think that's fine, but it, the playing field is not level and at this point in time, you know what, when I looked into the state code, it was very clear that if an entity council is not happy with a franchise, there's a process for addressing those problems. We don't have that now. And the last evidence I could find where franchise was in the book was 1982, and then it was gone. But that's.
David, did you have something?
No. No, I'm, I'm trying to resurrect this discussion from about three years ago and I probably should leave it alone.
All right, Ms. McLung?
She had, she had.
Joyce, I'm sorry.
Okay, when the code book was codified back in 2005 was the last time the municipal league did it, and when they put it together, they left out the taxi franchise that we had. And they, we accepted that code with an ordinance that they wrote for us, and in that ordinance, it said that any laws not herein, included in this code book are hereby rescinded. Now, what we did was rescind everything that wasn't in the code book and we got a ruling from what is?
Municipal league.
Well, from municipal league that, from the, what is the other lawyer's name that is in, that we have consulted?
David Shaw?
Lungalan or, what's his name?
Shaw, David Shaw.
No, the guy who's not in the municipal league.
The other one. Who? The other one, I can't think of the other.
The other, anyhow. Okay, when I asked him when he was up here consulting about zoning regulations and things, he said that, yes, that is true, but you cannot just simply cancel a franchise ordinance. There is a legal procedure for getting rid of a franchise, and he hadn't done that. So technically, that franchise is still in effect, even though it hasn't been in our code book and it's been out there, but we have never had a problem with it. What we have now is a situation where if you want to operate a taxi cab company in Eureka Springs, you come and you get a business license because we don't have anything that limits the number of taxi cabs or that specifically assigns them to a particular person, and we don't really have in writing anything that you have to do to qualify as a taxi cab company. All we actually have in the books is what Anne included with us in our packets today that just simply, we have at this point two taxi businesses in Eureka. 在尤里卡 Springs。然而 Abundant Taxi 被出售给了一个城市是市中心。我不知道公司的名字。安知道。Cody Sturzle， 他拥有 Abundant Taxi， 已经不再与它相关。现在他们必须来获得新的许可。他们被允许这么做。因为他们买了这个公司。但是如果有人想进入镇上 和出租车公司一样， 他们可以这样做。因为我们有书。我们没有说什么我们只能有两辆出租车公司。我们有书说的是你必须有一辆出租车许可在尤里卡 Springs 开车。现在的状况是 anybody 谁想开车在尤里卡 Springs 可以获得许可。我们不能限制它， 因为你不能说 不，我们有足够的出租车。除非你有法律限制。它不是你我们不能告诉别人 你不能吃午饭， 因为我们有足够。这是违反法律。如果他们想开车， 他们可以做到。他们只需要一个许可开车。因为我们没有要求保险或者 liability 或者类似的东西。我们需要清理这个之前我们遇到麻烦。在这个时候， anybody 想开车可以做到。
先生， contrary to what 女士说了， 我相信我们做了所有我们我们做了三年前或者是什么。
对。
我们只能允许和原因是在最初的时候。因为 据我记得， 因为我们没有得到 24 夏服务的出租车。和服务不是持续的。因此，我们决定 再让另一个出租车公司镇上。二，这是我们能有的。我认为我们三年前做的事足以解决任何可能出现的问题。所以我不知道我们在做什么。
为什么说我们只能有两辆？
回去看看。
对，我不记得。
我 它不存在在书面中，安？
一个想要有出租车公司镇上的 entity 需要来理事会获得和方便公共需要。
对。
有趣的是， 这是特定 franchise 的词。所以有理事会的手段来限制出租车公司。他们不能直接走进来说我想要我要一辆出租车。
好的，所以我们 你不觉得我们有问题吗？ 即使那些拥有出租车公司的人现在不在这里。他们远在远方。他们的方式现在是一个有出租车的市民打电话当他想打电话时。如果他不想打电话， 他不会接电话。这就是我收到的邮件中解释的。但我收到了。我只是想澄清这一点。我们有问题吗？ 还是我们将来会考虑 路上的问题， 如果我们不现在依法行事？
米奇。
对，我记得我在理事会的时候。我们经过了这个事情。我记得我们当时的问题。因为 franchise 不清楚。我想我们采取了行动来说明我们有 franchise。因为我们有需要的 certificates。我们有批准。他需要证明保险司机 他们的执照， 九个部分。
没有。
我以为他们需要证明保险。那不是我们要等的吗？
他们自己决定。我们没有法律说他们必须这么做。
对。我们是州的。但是，对， 确保每个地方都被覆盖。
现在， whether that turned into something in writing， 我不知道。
他们必须， 因为他们获得了第二次和唯一的 franchise。
不过，他没有在镇上。
没有。但是他的司机他说他声明他个人不会在镇上。但他他会有司机在镇上。那将是 24/7 的 availability。
它没有说保险。
保险是由州政府管理。
对。它是它是
就像我说的， 一个是，另一个。但他需要证明所有。
他们必须在理事会之前对公共运输。但我也不太理解 是仅仅只有两个吗？
它 probably 是实际上不是只有两个。除非理事会不需要批准 50 个人进入因为这个要求要颁发需要的 certificates。如果我们不需要 50 辆公司， 我们就不需要发 50 辆。
但是如果我们没有 一些办法来限制它， 那会让我们进入 卡车领域吗？
我觉得不是。在这个方面。
你想确定。
真实的问题是不是你现在所关注的。希望它不会成为一个问题。但是那将是这些不是出租车公司的公司。现在正在运营。
我们没有在关于当地居民就是
我们的州代表否定了我们所有。
否定了， 比如？
为什么？ 我不确定。
州 legislature 说那些不是出租车公司。并且我们不能规定它们以这种方式。
所以一个人可以站在那里 说，我给你一个车。
不， 他们不能他们不能在街上请求。
但他们可以被叫到。
但他们可以被叫到。
所以我们现在没有控制。我们有。
公共事务委员会去年年底刚颁布了规则。我昨天拿到了规则的复制。我看了。我们没有太多可以做的。
他们提出了 legislation， 我想是过去的。我在找。它允许人们使用手机和电话应用。
它被视为使用手机的应用。不是实体出租车公司。
泰瑞。稍等。
对不起。
泰瑞，不，你先说。
好的。所以他们可以无经营执照运营。他们不需要。
他们需要从 Arkansas 省申请 $15,000 的许可。给公司用于 statewide 用。然后它交给州， 而不是我们。
然后
我们离开了。
所以
我们离开了。
所以他们他们没有他们没有 如果他们需要被保险或者什么， 那不是我们的事情。
州
我们不能规定它。
州
它完全不在我们的 jurisdiction。
这是正确的。州要求他们经常报告。无论他们有 complaints， 它要求他们发卡片给人们他们的名字和如何联系。如果有人有 complaint， 有某些规则。但是它们都是州规定的。
这不是我们的。
米奇。
好的，所以这意味着 既然他们现在我们在谈论有手机的人。我认为这是 Uber 的路线。这意味着我们只知道有人在我在我的商店看到他在车上。有人进来。显然，他们正在问 给我这里或者那里。我可以检查一下他是否有执照。从州。
你可以呼叫州看看有没有公司有这个权限。不是那个个体。
什么 $15,000 的东西？
那是给州运营系统。
好的，所以 就是这样。所以我看到他在车上。我拿上车牌号。我呼叫州。我说
你不能这样检查。你可以做报告。他们会看。他们不会告诉你 necessarily 的结果。
所以如果我说， 好的，这是你的车牌号。你做什么？ 他们会检查。如果他有他的 $15,000。
假设他们会调查。
啊， 好。
这适用于 motorized vehicles 还是任何 transportation？ 如果我有一个货车。我有我的电话应用。我开着在路上。我能 我能接受这个吗？
它实际上有定义 vehicle 那种我认为排除了其他汽车。
好的。
实际上定义会排除 limousines 和其他车辆。
好的， 现在我有一个澄清。你说他们不允许请求。然而如果我想 simply 就是经营 serving 酒吧和午饭和餐厅在尤里卡 Springs。我有车。我给他们我的商业卡和我的电话号码。然后我可以只运营一个我获得的经营执照。我我会在经营。
你必须有州的祝福。
$15,000。
$15,000。
$15,000。
那不是在当地的运营吗？
是的。
如果我只是想在城市范围内运营？
那那不影响。如果你想要整个州， 或者你想要一个特定的。
好的，但我们没有知道 我唯一能做的就是报告给我。希望州能查出来。
这是
如果你不同意， 好的，我们可以结束这个讨论。但是它不像我们控制。
问题在于
哦，好的。
除非你去州 legislature 说
你傻逼。
我们得做不同的事情。
对，但我们需要 花很多钱给 legislators 让他们投票。
Little Rock 在北 Little Rock， 我谈到了 Little Rock 市区 attorney。他们有很多人和我们一样多钱。来看。
会不会影响我们有真正的 legal Would it make any difference if we had an actual legal franchise ordinance limiting our taxi service to two franchises?
No, Little Rock has one.
And it doesn't make any difference?
Nope.
Terry?
So if I understand you correctly, $15,000, there's only gonna be one company in the state that can do this?
No, it's my understanding that this time there's eight.
There's eight and they can, they can have as many cars as they want to.
They have as many.
Operate in it statewide.
Yes.
And what about insurance and good brakes and all that?
All that, all that goes through the state.
Yeah.
But I mean, what state is demanding this?
They're, they have rules on what they have to pass, yes.
So we have no control over keeping people in our city safe is what it boils down to.
Talk to your state rep.
Good talk.
Because anybody can go out there and operate unless they're gonna spend their whole weekend standing out there writing down plate numbers and turning them in to see if they're legal or not. We can't do anything to keep our people safe.
We have to rely on the state of Arkansas's wisdom, apparently.
To keep our people safe.
But they aren't gonna know if, if he's gone out and, and paid this 15,000.
But you're arguing with the wrong group. We're not the problem.
No, but that's what I'm saying. But this is what state has come down with.
Yeah. Talk to you know who.
If you really want to know, what I consider one of the worst parts of it, is they're even exempt from FOIA on a lot of it. I mean, there's specific FOIA exemptions.
Must have to follow the money to see this one.
By the way, if anybody needs to ride home after.
Don't solicit for money.
Do you have a meter in your car?
I don't know. I suggested that we all vote libertarian this time around. I think we should do that and get rid of everybody in the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, here we go, do that.
All right, I think we, we, we got the legal issue of that most too sodden unfortunately.
Well, so did we ever decide what we're doing about the abundant taxi situation?
It's okay. There's nothing to do.
Oh, okay.
It's a new point.
So even, oh, because of what he said?
No, because it's, it's a business and it's a corporation and you, and they, they have the right to pick up what they, what abundant.
So it can change hands and continue on?
That's correct. There you go, nutshell.
Okay.
All right.
I'm glad we talked.
Yes.
Next item is agenda setting. Anybody got anything? Mickey?
Do we need to put anything on there on the tax thing we've been talking about?
No, I'll bring that up.
Okay.
We got some issues that are from my office that I'll get on the agenda.
Just the ones I gave you.
I guess approval of the budget for 2016 would come at the next meeting?
Yep.
The formal?
Yeah. And part of it, of course, is in the announcements. We'll have the budget meeting prior to that too.
Next Monday, isn't that correct?
Right.
Oh, that's right too, they did.
I've got both circled because I didn't know where it ended up.
Coming in on the 19th?
19th.
19th.
Anybody have anything?
Well, we might have a report from the judge, Jackson, on the Dotson thing.
Once we get one, I'll let you know. Or I'll let the mayor's office know.
So it's not an agenda thing?
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Terry?
I'll just go ahead and bring it up now. I would like to, it's not necessarily an agenda item, but it could be unless you can come up with a calendar before the next meeting.
A calendar? Oh.
Can't you see the calendar up there?
Took the old one down.
You can't see the other one?
It was ripped to shreds. I saw it last.
Well, we could, Scott duct tape and a magic marker would have fit it.
We'll see what we can do.
Somebody go to the Pete store and get a free one.
Nice. Well, it's gotta be big enough for people to see.
I'll bring it in a box.
Call Swepco, ask if they have a free calendar.
Well, we know there's, there's a bank around that has one.
Yeah, but it's just like proof running for this year.
All right. City council comments.
Not for me.
Okay. Mr. McClure? David?
I think I'll keep the trend going, nothing.
Mickey?
I want Terry to hit James.
Oh, don't you dare.
Terry, Happy New Year.
All right, Joyce?
No, I don't believe it.
I don't really have, I had something and I was gonna write it down and I didn't get it done. I do have some upcoming events though. We have the 17th, which is next Sunday. It's gonna be a tour of the high school property up there for people from 1 o'clock to approximately 1:45. If anybody's interested in seeing the old high school property and what they are planning on doing, basically the, trying to convert the parts of it into a community center. They'll have an informational presentation at 2 o'clock from 2:00 to 3:30 with Cromwell Architects will be there and, and other people. And it's kind of a continuation from, I wanna say maybe a year ago, a year and a half, they had a public meeting and got a lot of people up there.
That presentation will be at the convention center.
And, and, correct, into the Ozarks.
Okay, I'm confused. Try this again.
Okay, the tour, the tour will be at the high school, the old high school up on top of Benton Street from 1:00 to 1:45. And then they'll have a presentation from 2:00 to 3:30 at the end of the Ozarks. And just to let the council know again what I told them a year, year and a half ago, that the city would love to see something to do it, but we don't have any money and it's gonna have to be something that's self-supporting on its own contributions. We don't have any money to throw into the kitty. But I'm totally supportive of it, you know? And if things happen and things change, you know, we might see things going around. But they do have a pro forma that they worked out and they seem to have a way that they seem to think make it feasible. So for the public to look at.
Enterprise is best sometimes left out of the city's hands.
Yes, absolutely. And of course, as we already talked about, we'll have a city council budget final workshop with, with capital on 1/19, which is Tuesday, at 4 o'clock here in the council room. The Parks Department is gonna have an open house on the 26th at, from 2:00 to 4:00. And it's basically to show people what we spent on that money that we allowed for Christmas and just for the commission. I haven't gotten the final total on it. But they spent, I wanna say around $11,000 to 13 maybe. And part of that went to create storage for the decorations. So we now have a place that originally, I think the commission, if they remember right, we had, you know, Christmas decorations scattered three, four, five different places. We now have a place where we're all in one location. So, and they've cleaned that up. They've got air ventilation in through there. So the mold is, is all, pretty much all gone. They've got that cleaned up and painted over. So they invited the council and public to please show up on the 26th between 2:00 and 4:00 and look through it. I think they've done a great, great job.
So, so all, so the money spent and all the decorations are now secured for henceforth?
For next year. And we still have some money left over for maintenance and, and replacement of bulbs and wiring for next year too.
It looked good. They did a good job.
This town looked, looked nice, the springs, everything and the color. Did, just, did we find both Satori's wreaths that he talked about all the time? Was that really true?
We did find some.
It was true, okay. I just.
We, we, when you came down Plainer Hill, you saw a bunch of wreaths.
And they were all relit and everything?
Yeah. Now, the big wreath over here on the auditorium was donated.
Yeah, that was.
By De Perkypal up there. But we had to redo that.
Okay. I had heard that rumor.
And just for your information, I know somebody's talked about, one of the lights is out on the auditorium. We have one that folks, and the other one's out. There's a short. It's not a light bulb. We've already tried the light bulb and it's an electrical issue that, it's gonna cost money to fix.
Of course.
Nothing new there. And then, hooray, hooray, the beginning of Mardi Gras, January 30th. We will have a Eureka Grass Night Parade at 6 o'clock, starting from Rowdy Beavers and down to the library and from the library on down Spring Street. So to kick off the Mardi Gras season. So that's gonna be exciting.
I can't wait.
All right.
Got your beads?
Wait, do the best that you can. All right, I don't have anything else. We have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second, on favor?
All right.
Thank you, guys.